Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation's power.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, um, will be the, uh, a motion to approve the minutes from last, uh, thirteenth, uh, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner's.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner's office, financials with Heidi.
Financials today include a revenue certification for the intensive supervision probation fund or additional funding that the county received for the cognitive behavioral treatment program. We have to transfer out of the general fund for a portion of 2014 funding for the county home, travel across the common police court and the Department of Job and Family Services, and the fourth quarter 2013 vet tax dispersments to the city of Shardon, Burton Village, Russell Township, and Yawagah.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner's.
Aye, financials has been approved. The, um, office of community economic developments. Morning Kelly, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
I hear this will change that.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Um, I'm here today to take through the final performance report for grant BF-12-181. This is housekeeping, this is our final report to the state showing where the funds were spent, where they were all expended, that were brought in.
So that, so, so, so basically, just for the record, we would have, uh, this was with the Maple Leaf community, uh, countywide Huntsburg Township, fair housing, the administration and the city of Shardon, and, um, this was, this would have been from two thousand and thirteen and then carried over to fourteen for the, for the final approval, right?
Exactly.
Okay. And that would have been like the bathrooms at the-
Yes, the county home.
-county home, the bathrooms at Burton or whatever the law was.
No, that's this year, um, that would have been the county home renovations that we completed and the Maple Leaf generator and the, um-
Huntsburg.
Huntsburg Township, yeah.
Huntsburg, yeah, that was last year.
Yeah, Shardon was deleted from the grant last year, it never went through because of the heritage.
It didn't get the lock-in.
Okay.
Lock-in.
All right, so any questions or, you didn't include that? So if we could read motion number three.
The office of community and economic development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of board to execute a half community development block grant program file performance report for grant number B-F-F-12-181 for the period September first, 2012 through February twenty eighth, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner's.
Motion stands approved.
Thank you.
And I just need to sign that one. Just, okay. All right, if we could have the county engineer show them. Morning.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning.
Three items I have on here requesting the board to approve the, uh, contracts for, uh, three different jobs here, first one being the polyester pavement markings of various roads, um, every year we do roughly half of our road re-strengthen. That one, that one came in, uh, the estimate was hundred eighty-five and came in at a hundred and sixty-two thousand, so we were pretty good on that one. Pretty aggressive. Uh, the second one is the resurfacing of Mumford Road, and that would be the south end of it from Patch South. That one was estimated at a hundred eighty-five thousand and it came in at, uh, about, I'm sorry. That was estimated seven hundred thousand and it came in at six hundred and twelve. Pretty good there, too. The asphalt seems to be aggressive again this year, the bidders are very aggressive. Uh, the next one is the improvement to the intersection of Mund Road and Taylor Mae. There's been a, over the years, there's been some severe accidents there, I'm going to say a high accident rate, but when there is an accident, they are severe, so we're improving the site dissonance there and making some improvements. Should help out in that. The estimate was two hundred thousand on that one, it came in at two sixteen, so what we're seeing is so many reconstruction jobs and so forth, they're probably going to have a little higher number than somebody expected. All three contractors are very confident and we should be able to have no problems with that.
So is the asphalt pricing about last year's price lower or higher?
It's, it's rough, it's about the same, it's hard to tell with your first set of bids because the contractors are all, you know, trying to figure out where everybody else is going to bid and everything, but, uh, they're looking about the same as last year, which was a very good year.
Okay.
Considering cost of fuel and everything else, uh, as well.
Number five, where the resurfacing of Mumford Road, how long a distance is that? I mean, if you-
I don't have it with me, I think it's right around two miles, if I'm not mistaken. I can't get you that though, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine, I just, it's your curiosity more than anything else, it is what it is, but-
I do have it with me, if I go through, if I go through here, um-
That would be both sides, correct?
Yep, my mistake, yes, three point three seven miles.
That's almost four miles.
No, three point three seven.
All sides in the shoulder, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're just asking that we can move forward with that and award those bids.
Okay, so if we can, let's read number four, uh, let's read these individually and then we'll-
Individually. The county engineer's office is requesting the board award the bid to Eclipse Construction Incorporated for the application of polyester pavement markings to various roads tracked county here in 2014 in the amount of hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents as they represented the lowest and best bid, the bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner's.
Aye, motion approved.
County engineer's office is requesting the board award the bid to Cardwell Payden Company for the asphalt resurfacing of Mumford Road, CH twenty-four section through age in Troy Township in the amount of six hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars as they represented the lowest and best bid, the bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Abstain.
Commissioner Rear.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye. Motion stands approved.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board award the bid to Eclipse Company LLC for the improvement of the intersection of Mund Road, CH thirty-two and Taylor Mae Road, TR one eighty-six in Oppen Township in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents as they represented the lowest and best bid, the bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner Rear.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye, motion stands approved on that. Thank you, Joe, have a good day. Okay, number seven, we have Department of Jobs and Family Services, Tim and Gina, morning.
Good morning.
Hi Gina, how are you?
Good, how are you?
We have a, have an item, actually two items, but like one, particularly to children's services and our prevention retention contingency plan, and it's not always that our philosophy and our principles that drive what we do in children's services align with our economic needs and our strategies and desires to handle on our finances. But this is a situation where we think they do align, and that's why we're here this morning, um, and we're asking for a amendment to our prevention retention contingency plan so that we can use some federal funds to provide services to, uh, families in the hopes to first keep children in their home with some limited support, or in the need, we might have new children, to be able to provide limited support to a relative so that the child would be from the family, is the place to be in place to perhaps foster care or another other setting. So, um, it's a, it's a, we think it's in the best interest of children, and it's also in the best interest of our budget and extension. And I would like to ask Gina just to share just a little bit of information with you, this is, I don't know, like this last night, um, just about the main points that we, uh, primary reasons, I think I sent you a presentation last week as well, but some of the primary reasons we'd like to give your voice to the community.
Okay, all right, so like Tim said, I mean, what we really are wanting to do is make sure that we're serving the families the best way that we can, and in order to do that, a lot of times we do want to keep them in the home, that's always the goal, is to be less intrusive and least restrictive and keep the families together. And so, we do run into times where, you know, we have like our best practice sort of philosophy and then we run into a budget concern that, you know, we always have to worry about, you know, are we being good stewards of our money and how are we doing this? And when we thought about being able to use these monies to do things that sometimes are a little bit more difficult, we have families that we work with that run into problems with counseling services, they may have insurance, but their insurance isn't covered by the agency that they're going to, or it may be covered, but they still have a very large co-pay that they have to do. But we know that what that family really needs are those counseling services in order to be successful and to survive as a family and to keep those kids in the home. And so, using this money would allow us to help them with the co-pays or with funding the counseling for them. So again, we're putting the services in upfront to help hopefully down the line to prevent removals or more serious costs. Another example would be using it for kinship families, we've run into situations before where we have had to remove children from the home, and we know based on all kinds of different research and just practice that placing them with kin is more successful for them, it's less intrusive, it's less traumatic, but kin have obstacles and barriers that they have to overcome at times, too. We had a case a couple months ago where the grandma was just moving into a place of her own, she had been living with the family and trying to support them, and the relationship between the child and the mother was just too violent, or that they could not be together, the behaviors, she couldn't manage them. So grandma was willing to get a place of her own and have the son come live with her, or the grandson come live with her. She needed help with first month's rent, she was able to get a security deposit, was able to get, you know, other things she needed, but she was just struggling a little bit with that. This would allow us to help her with first month's rent, because again, even though that may be a larger expense upfront, it's still going to be less than having to have that child placed in foster care, and it's going to be better for that child to be with family and to be in the foster care system. So those are just a couple of the examples that, you know, we wanted to share with you to let you know what we were thinking, using the courts all to help the families be stronger and, like we said, sort of align with what our thoughts and ideas are.
Currently, we can provide these services and actually, there's statute that says that we should provide these supportive services, and the court says we should provide these supportive services. Currently, we can provide these services with levy dollars, but we can also use these funds, our federal TANA funds, it is one of the major goals of the federal TANA program, uh, we were running the possibility of sending that money back to Congress this year, and if we don't need to use it, we will send it back, do not spend this for the sake of spending. However, the second page of your handout, uh, as you know, as we've talked about before, looks at our placement costs over the last three years, and, uh, we are, we are living with a, just a very, very dramatic, never experienced before increase in our placement costs. They're about fourfold today of what they were in two thousand and eleven. So, you know, we need to utilize our funding as much as we possibly can, uh, we would like to, you know, stretch our levy funds as far as we possibly can, community has supported children's services for many years, and you think, you know, if you look in their tax bill, their children's services levy, I think it's the smallest, maybe the second smallest levy that you pay, uh, and that's good, and we like to keep that. This is just a little way of tinkering with the revenues and resources that we have to bring some federal and state funds into play, provide these services to the family and stretch those levy dollars for the park, because we don't, we don't have the choice with placements, uh, you know, we like to be able to avoid them, and sometimes the early years start to work with the families, as Gina says, we have that, but using the, uh, the, uh, the RC to do that as opposed to levy funds is just, I think it's a better use of our funds. That's the, that's the gist of it.
Aye.
We have to answer the question.
So, so as far as for the county's dollars into it, it's more, this is more than to pursue the, the federal funds that are available for this program?
Right, and they, it, we receive a manual allocation, and we use that for a number of services, we use it to support working folks, low-income folks who are working with things like car repair and, uh, uniforms and work-related items, uh, but we can also adjust that plan, again, as it's part of the TANA principle of the four main goals of the federal TANA program, we can use it to help families keep children in their home. And so, if we make that adjustment to our, our plan, and this is one of the few, uh, tools we have at, at the county level, counties were given the ability with welfare reform in nineteen ninety-eight to have a local plan, so our plan looks different than the neighboring county's plan, but really to put something into place that makes sense for your community to help people, you know, keep their jobs or to get that job, or in this case also to be used to help families keep their children in their home. And it is an income-based, uh, plan, we have limits on how much we, who we can serve and how much we would use, but we have it in the plan, it's something that's there. And the other issue, of course, is our, our, uh, family services planning committee looked at this as some advisory group, uh, and they looked at this back in, I think it was, I'd been a member of last year, actually, uh-
It's been a while.
Yeah, been a while. And, and did, did look at this and make a recommendation, okay, for the commissioners, this has been, uh, hard to get any opinions just because it's been a very, very busy time.
And as far as the, the dollars that are on the bottom, uh, the, the receiving, the dollars that we'll receive is on average is how much, can we receive a monthly, yearly?
Our TANA allocation is just a little short of a million dollars, it's about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
For the year?
For the year. And, and of course, we, we use that again to, to support primarily our services through the income maintenance, through our family assistance programs, but we can use it on the child welfare side in, in some, in some cases, if we write it into our PRC.
What if there was a situation where you had a child, child that was at a, say, say a public school and, you know, was not helping as far as to be in that environment and they wanted to, you know, send him to a private school? Is this funding available to assist the parents with that?
I wouldn't necessarily say like a, a private school, but what we have done, like we've had children that have been struggling in school, and so we've worked with the school and they've identified, like if the school's identified, uh, a different placement option for them, like there's been children who have gone to the partial hospitalization program at Beach Brook, and so they've spent some of the day, again, a traditional classroom, and then they go to Beach Brook to have additional schooling, and it's sort of a combination between schooling and, and counseling services. This could help us with that, like support that type of placement, having a child receive specialized services, but it is going to have to be something that would be appropriate at school, that we wouldn't be able to say, oh, you know, I want to send my child to Notre Dame.
But Beach Brook is, is, has the-
Right, because it's like a ther-, you know, there's therapeutic behavior component, too, we wouldn't be able to support like a private school placement just because.
And in that case, in that case, I would, I guess I would say it's, it's likely that there would be work involvement in any case like that, so there would be, you know, plans delivered to the court.
Because on, based on, just in, just for conversational purposes, in your opinion, you know, and I've, I've been approached by a number of, of parents that just, you know, can't afford to, you know, justify sending to, you know, Notre Dame or, you know, Saint Mary's or, but they realize that a lot of the issues that they're experiencing with their kids, you know, is just because of some of the differences in discipline levels that they're going to experience in a, you know, public environment compared to a private setting. I mean, what, what, what is in place, you know, if they don't qualify for some financial aid at the, at the, um, say, at the private, uh, school, you know, what other routes are there for, for, for a parent that I, that you could tell them to take to be able to, you know, to, to, to do something like that? What, what other programs could you recommend?
Well, I know with the, with the TANA program, um, there are some prohibitions about spending those dollars on medical costs, not coastline free, but doctors' visits and things like that. I believe there's, I believe there are some prohibitions about spending them on primary and secondary education. As the federal government's saying, no, we send, we send you, not, we send you education dollars for those, you can't use these dollars.
Are there any programs alterable that people can?
You know, while some of those schools, for people, I mean, if the student isn't a severely problem child, they do have some funds, I think Notre Dame does, I think Saint Mary's has some money, but if they're a behavioral issue-
I can't, I really can't say that they-
They can pick and choose who they want to keep.
Yeah, is that what you're asking, like to get help with tuition or just other services?
Tuition, tuition, you know, because a lot of people just don't want their kids, you know, around a certain group of people, you know, and it's, and a lot of them, you know, approach, you know, I've been approached by a lot of people that say, you know, what is available before their kids even get to the point of going to school, just because they know that there is that risk, you know?
That, that's a little, I mean, that we do provide services and, and look at as a very, very important part of, of helping, uh, parents and children, that's the, that's the earlier, uh, services. And again, in some cases, we might use TANA dollars for that because they're not actually school necessarily, whether in K or pre-K, um, but we might look at using the TANA funds for that, we can do some child welfare funds, correct, because, uh, believe it or not, you start, some families will notice, challenge that, this behavior at one and a half, two years old, you know, this is happening in a child care center, uh, or comes to our attention some other way, we do have some programs that we, incredible years, help you grow if they're, for the help you grow program, uh, DECA, the, if they're in a public childcare program that has a DECA program, you know, those services are so, I think, critical to preventing a lot of the issues that we run into with so many children past age and age, because it is a, is a way to work with a family in respect of the, the primacy of the family, but to give the family and parents resources when they're dealing with perhaps behavior issues and challenges at a very young age, to give them those resources and support so they can deal with those things effectively, because you have your greatest chance to make an impact in that first five, and we are, we do invest some money in that, I wish we had more to put into that, but that's, and I will say that, uh, I think our county has a job in the services agency, puts as much on our side as anybody, because it makes so much more sense to prevent than it does to come and treat afterwards in that as expensive way. So, so that part of that, we, we recognize the importance of knowing that. The education piece, um, I'm not, I mean, probably our resources aren't available, it may be through the county border, but I'm not-
I mean, I know there's the private school aid, um, you know, that they could apply for assistance to that, even like if it was a Saint Mary's, I don't know about Notre Dame, but you could apply through the diocese, they have scholarships at times or different assistance, that we're even, you know, each school may have their own type of, type of assistance type of-
I'm guessing that the issue is whether or not medically or scientifically the child needs to be in this environment, or whether mom and dad want the child in that environment, or is it based on a, a need or a want, if the child needs to have these services, then there apparently is some-
There's more that-
-of, of support for the need component. If mom and dad want their child in a different environment because they want them there, it's hard to ask the voting public or the taxpaying public to send, or, you know, unless it's a lottery, I don't know, how do you, how do you make it, how do you make it fair? I mean, everybody would like to send their kid to a, to a, uh, a school like that, or not everybody, but a lot of people.
But those are the two, I, I know the types he offers, you know, different scholarships, and then I know the types of schools you can have.
And if, if there is a child involved and we're looking at how, how the child is attending the school, whether it is a school or, and there's a conversation about, you know, an example, partial pay, and there's a team of folks who look at that issue, including representations of this, so they have-
Most of those have an IMP or something, a team.
But I would think that in the private schools, like through the diocese, they're going to look very hard at financial need, very hard at that, because many years ago, our kids could go to private schools like that, there was no tuition, but it's not the case anymore.
I'm not sure how it's changed, but for a long period of time, we had a child with special needs, they were better served in the public school environment than in the private school environment because of the funding that was involved. I had a niece that had the situation, you know, in the, uh, situation, it, it, something as, as, you know, relatively as simple as an LD, uh-
Learning disability, yeah.
Yeah, situation, it was, what were the options for the, my, um, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, I think Senator Julie Billiard or-
Julia Bureau, you're, oh, that's-
Send him there and pay the bunny there, or send, send the child to West Yaga, because they're equipped to cope with that, that LD, and, and that smacks in the face of what normal people think with a, of a parochial school in the better, better shade, but I don't know if that's changed with federal mandates and so on or not.
He's still, I mean, he would more than likely get better services, our special-
At, at a public school, because of the numbers and the funding and so on.
All right then, so, good conversation, I, we should read number seven then?
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve the recommendation of the executive director and the family services plan for the new amendment, the prevention of tension and continued CPRC plan to get family stability and child welfare services to be effective April first, 2014. This amendment will include family counseling, vocational and educational counseling, independent living skills, wraparound programs, family preservation and reunification services, respite care, case management services, and child welfare, welfare contingency benefits for parents with minor children, specified relatives and/or kinship families with minor children, specified families with household income under below two hundred percent may be eligible, services capped at two thousand dollars per twelve-month period with contingency benefits capped at a thousand dollars per twelve-month period.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner's meeting.
Aye.
Commissioner Rear.
Aye. Aye, motion stands approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number eight.
Right, okay, uh, well, just to come and respond, uh, last week, I guess we're at the end of your session, you had someone who had been a client of ours, came and voiced some concerns, and so I wanted to, to respond, got some information to share with you, um, to approve this and to respect those, uh, those, uh, privacy issues, but of course, I think, I mean, we were made aware, like Dave, the official was here, and I'll, we see it on the, on the internet, um, and when, you know, when someone has a complaint, we do, we do take that seriously.
And when, you know, when someone has a complaint, we, we do, we do take that seriously. We see a lot of people, we receive, in our IM division, our family assistance programs, you know, we get 375 or 500 phone calls a week, and that's just, that's just the IM piece of it. We see a lot of folks, you know, sometimes the news we are giving them, because of the programs, in fact, we have to administer, administer those programs, we follow the rules and regulations, you know, they, they aren't happy to hear what we have to say. Many aren't. And also, we recognize that we're challenged with the numbers that we, we have, and the folks who come to our agency, trying to meet the service needs that, that they would expect. And we, many times, wish we had staffing levels to meet those needs. And we constantly look at how we're providing services and what we're doing and make adjustments. In this particular case, the person, client had applied for heat, and they were concerned, I think, as I summarized it, from a couple of things, length of time that they got their delivery for their assistance, the fact that they didn't get a call back in a timely fashion, and some other paperwork concerns. So I, I've given you a timeline, and the first page is a sort of a detailed date by date, row by row, if you will, of what, what happened from, you know, from our perspective on it. And then the next page provides a little bit more information about the dates. And then the last page is just a little information about the heat program in general. Home Energy Assistance Program, HEAT, has something called the Winter Crisis Program, runs from November 1st, usually through March 31st. This year, the Department of Development Columbus extended it through April 15th because of the severe winter we've had and the demand for utility assistance. HEAT is about utility assistance. We, you know, we received a grant, signed a grant agreement, and it stipulates the, you know, the manner in which we must provide the services and what must be asked for, what the requirements are, what the income levels are, and where can we follow those rules. This individual had been in earlier in the year, in February 8th, having not been in the program before. They had had their tank filled, apparently at their own expense. Not sure exactly how that happened, and that's okay, but one of the rules that we have, if someone presents themselves, you have heat application for bulk fuel, they have to be at a one-fourth of the tank level if it's propane or fuel oil. So every, if it's electricity or gas, they have to be in a disconnect. If it's propane or fuel oil, they have to have less than a quart of a tank, which we would consider an emergency, because it's the, you know, home, heat, home emergency, Home Energy Assistance Program is targeted towards emergency situations. So this person had been in early February, but she'd had her tank filled and was not eligible. We do, to date, we've done about 507 applications that have been processed through Home Energy Assistance Program by, by our one-staff program, a one-staff person. When someone presents themselves with an application, that we immediately know, because in this case, that their tank is full, that we're going to go through an application process and deny them, we don't take that application. That's a half hour, 45 minutes to go through a process with someone to state the obvious. And in our perspective, we need to explain why we can't approve it, we don't go through the bad process of doing an application in that case. We think that there's any possibility at all that they might be eligible to work those applications out. As I said, we were 507, since the 1st of November, I think that was through, November 11th, I think there were 64 denials out of that, and about 433 or so approvals. So most people who come in, you know, they're eligible, they may be familiar with the program, we could have folks who've been on the program before, you know, they are, they, we go through the process and determine eligibility for that. But this individual had come in February, but her tank was full, so we didn't take the application because, again, it would have been a 45-minute process to get to the same thing, and tell our staff, don't, don't use your time that way, that's just not a smart way to use your time when you have perhaps 40 other cases pending, phone calls to make, you know, people to get back to, other people perhaps in the waiting room to talk to. So that was one of the things that was, was pointed out. The client came back to us again later, at the end of the month, the tank had, was low, and applied, called in, I think about the 27th of February, we sent a letter dated February 8th saying that there was a scheduled appointment for her to come in on March 6th, 8 o'clock. And so we met with the client at that time, took the application, and then a little strange feature caused a little bit of a delay. The, the person had a supplier out of Medina County, he wasn't registered with the state HEAT program, so one of the rules that the state has is that suppliers for bulk fuel must be registered. I can honestly tell you what that means, it's just that on the computer system, when you put in a supplier, it tells you whether they're an acceptable vendor or not. This vendor was not. To our knowledge, this is the first time we've ever run into that, because all of our suppliers in Jugga County for bulk fuel are registered vendors, those in the vicinity around Jugga County, most people would use, are all registered, have been for a long time. So that was kind of a unique incident, to have someone who didn't have a registered supplier. So that, that client, that, and then have to go make a contact with one of the registered suppliers, become a client, notify us that they were in fact, and certified with the company. That step happened actually very quickly, because the client called us less than an hour later and said, I now have this supplier. And they called, our worker was in the interview, and the voice, they called and voiced me before. And so this is something that we run into a lot, which is, we struggle having sufficient staff to do the face-to-face interviews or the telephone interviews with the number of applications that come in. And so people call and they say, I left a message and no one calls me back, that's because they're, they're in an interview with another person going through that, you know, that next application that is scheduled, and they are following the first one, or 45 minutes following the first one, whatever it may be. And that is a struggle for us. And we have done a couple of different things to try to, you know, give us the ability to return those phone calls, because they, they are, they make, they're the information that we're waiting on or need to complete an application. But again, the volume of those applying and the volume of communications back and forth are such that it is, is a challenge to have staff to stay on top of those things. So in this case, the client called back, we, our staff person had four of their interviews, two-hour training that they participated in, they got to their calls at the end of the day, needed to call back to the client the next day, about 8:00, I think, in the morning, said that, you know, your case is no longer pending, you've got approved supplier, and indicated that it would be approved. They then, the fax, they had to pay to the supplier, which they did about 9:30, and the annual delivery was made on that Monday. So...
The problem was that on that weekend, she had no heat at all. And her, her concern was that, you know, I, I understand the process, but I don't think anyone in Jugga County should go without heat on the weekend.
Right.
For a whole weekend.
Right.
That was...
And that's...
That's hard too.
And it's, in some ways, I mean...
Isn't there any kind of an emergency thing that...
We, we do have, we do have and have put people in emergency shelter, and what we ask people to do first is, you know, is there someplace that you can go? Because if, if we simply said, if you're low on heat or whatever, we'll take you to the shelter, I don't think we do, we, we don't have those resources. But what we kind of ask the questions, do you have a family member that you can go and stay at, and we can get an emergency delivery, or something arranged to help? Because quite often people present themselves and they don't have any resources, and, and that's the issue. We'll ask if they have someplace to go. No, I don't have any family close, neighbor or friend, no, I don't have those. Then we can take the step to put someone up in a motel, and we have, we'll do that for two or three days, and, and longer, depending on the circumstances, but I think our, our grant, or community use, targets up to three days. So we do look at other resources, try to find other ways to help somebody.
It looks like in this case, you know, you, the application, she selected a vendor, and then it goes through the process, and the vendor is approved at 9:00, 9:20 a.m. on the Friday, but unfortunately, the vendor that had been all set up apparently wasn't in a position...
To deliver.
...that whole day of Friday, not to get up here and do a delivery, so...
And, and she, she felt the way she had been treated, that, that was the issue. I mean, she, she was here, we all listened.
Right.
And there's always two sides to every story.
Right.
But the fact that she spent all weekend with no heat, and she had tried, started early, and the reason she paid for that one delivery, she needed, you know, she needed it, and she realized she had to fill out these applications.
Right.
And, and that's, it's really unfortunate. I mean, she's okay now.
Right.
But I guess her complaint was in the way she had been...
And it's a hard...
Treated in a customer...
It is a hard thing to do because, you know, there's all these other circumstances, and, you know, of course, you know, there's certain information we can share, and, you know, we can't share all the information about the case, and, and every case is case by case, and, you know, some things that, you know, would make it that, yes, you could make it more of an emergency, you know, depending on maybe resources that were available or other supports that, that the person has. Like Tim said, we have, you know, put people in the motel on an emergency basis so that they were not spending a weekend in the cold. And, and it does get hard, because we do have to try and be flexible and creative in how we can do that. But you also can't force someone to do things either, and again, not knowing all the specifics, because again, every case is different. But there's been plenty of times too where we've offered that as an option, and, and people don't want to do that. We can't always spend, you know, the other $700 for a minimum delivery if I have an option of, of doing something that's more costly.
And listening to this, I have a couple of questions, observations, that first, guys do a great job. Second, it's been a very, very hard and unusual winter. So the, the fact that, it sticks in my mind, she bought 600 gallons of propane or something like that, she said, filled the tank, and then she was out of money. So she wasn't asking for a freebie, she went and paid whatever money she had, according to her statement.
Right.
She paid, and it was full. Now, apparently she knew better than you or I would what her consumption would be, and, and she knew she'd be out in a, in a period of time. You know, you, you mentioned you did 500-some applications, I think?
507, this person.
507, and you have a staff person, so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm asking if it's unreasonable to cross-train, if you, you probably already have that, but added a, add a seasonal staff member, when, you know, there's going to be winters like two years ago where that person would be, they'd be playing cards or something, I mean, because it was not...
War.
It was war, but in, in a, in a freak winter like this, and then, and then the other piece that I have is that, and I, I understand, because you're short staff in that situation, that they explain the process, giving instructions to the person, and taking the paperwork early and putting it on file. I mean, clearly if this woman would have known, and maybe she did, I'm not blaming you guys, I just, I don't know, that, that her current propane supplier wasn't registered or accredited, she could have had the...
Right.
...that 600 gallons worth of heat to, to make that, that time, to make those arrangements. And maybe she did, I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm not assigning blame, I'm just wondering if there's a...
We, we've looked...
Better procedure or modified.
And, and we've looked for reasons to, you know, what can we do to fix this? And we talked about, we need to say, make sure that you have a registered supplier.
Right up front.
When you put that on the letter, and you, and again, this is the only instance we recall, that the folks who work with this program, some of them have worked with this for six or seven years, at that level of detail, that we found somebody who didn't have a registered supplier. And so if you put that on the letter, the concern is, it generates more question about who's a registered supplier, and generates phone calls, when in fact, you know, it may be one out of a...
I mean, if you had like one, ask your supplier if they're registered, Jugga County, two, you know, I mean, maybe dumb it down.
Ask if you deliver over the weekend.
Do you deliver right away, you know?
The other, the other thing about taking an application, keeping it on file, and one of the things, requirements we have is, we have to get current data.
Yeah.
We have to get the most recent, we can't do records from 30 days or even two weeks ago. And sometimes it's very frustrating for us as well, because someone might be in, and they come back three weeks later, and they'll say, but I gave you all that, and we'll say, yes, but we're sorry, we have to have to end, because it's just the documentation effort that goes into it. You know, looking at, and we do have a, we do have another person, the administrative funds that we receive, the operational grant we receive is about, is a $62,000. So we, we charge off, and it's in there, 88% of this person's time, because they do some other things as well. We have a backup that we, we have to that person, if we have overflow, we generally in previous years would have, you know, taken those extra applications to someone else. But unfortunately, those someone else's in our program right now are pretty hammered too, do not have a lot of capacity. And that's just a, an issue that we continually deal with, looking at the budget and the bottom line, and looking at the number of bodies we have to bring into play, and trying to, trying to manage that. And I don't think anybody in that IRIM division says that they're happy with how quickly we can respond to all the calls, but neither do we have the ability to say, let's bring three more staff on, and, you know, they can do that without the resources.
Now, what could we do to, to, to contract with, you know, a propane company, or to possibly bring a, a pool of like, you know, somebody that handles like the east side of the county, somebody on the south. We're not, I mean, it's, it would be, even if, we would possibly like a bid process to make it fairer, so that nobody's going to be favored one way or another, or do it in rotation, so that if, if we have, say, four propane companies, that we could, you know, that the commissioners could approve, you know, at the beginning of the year to say, we will guarantee X number of dollars in this fund, and part of this, part of the whole process would be is, is that they understand and agree that they, that, that if called to upon cer, you know, if called upon, that they have to respond within eight hours of the call to go to this house. Like in that situation, she, you know, there's a couple of concerns that, that bother me is, is that it's not just a matter of getting this lady into a, a warm home, but it's all the problems that are generated from this, because now all of a sudden, we put her in a situation, she has no heat, she walks into a house that has blown pipes everywhere. So now what happens, you know? So we're not really helping her by, and, and it's a situation where you guys can pick up the phone and say, listen, we've, we, we need you to respond to 123 Main Street, and, and, and put, you know, I don't know, what, what is it that you normally put in, like 100 gallons or something?
We put the minimum delivery, and kind of about a $700 delivery for propane and fuel.
So, so that we can, you know, we can, I think that, that I wouldn't have a problem, and I don't think the other two commissioners would have a problem, to approve something where we could just put somebody on standby for... And I don't think the other two commissioners would have a problem to approve something where we could just put somebody on standby for specifically a situation like this. So that, you know, God forbid something does happen. And we don't have the winter that we normally have.
It's not gonna happen all the time.
We can't predict what's in the future, but this has been bad.
Yeah, we have the conversation, and I think Junior will put back upon this. I mean, I have said in emails to total staff, I say that our administrative meetings, I don't really, there's a point in time where I really don't, I mean, I care about the money. I should probably say that in the meeting.
No, we know, we know where you're coming from.
We know where you're coming from.
There is a time where we'll figure out how to pay for it.
Right, right.
And, and when we're presented with that case, we, the staff have standing orders to respond to it. And, and I, and I think, I think we do. In this case, you know, if, if she, if she would have contacted us, we somehow would have known that, you know, she had no heat. You know, and we would have, you know, if she called back into the heat line.
Yes.
Called back into the line that she started. And she had called to the main front switchboard and said, here's the circumstances, I have no heat and it's whatever.
Now, could we make the message that basically for, you know, in a case of emergency or something, call this number because we need to address it?
They'll all call that number first.
Probably. People will call COB, they will call us, they can call United Way.
But, you know, sometimes they get frustrated and they think they, they haven't been treated properly. And, 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 and that was kind of the message that I heard. I think we heard that.
Right. And the problem too was is, is that day we had the Veteran Services Commission here, which they piped in immediately also of their discontent. Because they've said that they have, in their case file, have tried to contact Jobs and Family Services on many occasions. And they were basically said, you know, we agree 100% because we're running into the same situation. I understand everybody's task right now, but as far as the other thing too is, is I know that on here it says 25%. You know, can we, can, is that a, is that a policy that's, that's.
It's a state, it's a state.
State policy. You know, and I guess is, you know, is somehow to, to, to talk to the state to say, you know, we're in a situation where. Like, let me ask you, on those cases, when they come in for those applications for the face-to-face application, what would you say the timeframe is on, on something like that? Half hour to an hour?
We, we actually will, I mean, that's the length of the interview. Generally, an interview, if someone has all their paperwork, we can work through that. Otherwise, you require documents sent to our, our system we have to use, painful, slow process. But about an hour would be an average. Some would go a little quicker.
So we're looking at 12 solid weeks for the 500 and some cases. That's 12 solid weeks of eight-hour days with no breaks.
Right.
That we're looking at. And, you know, so, so we're basically looking at, it's, it's huge. And that's not taking into perspective, you know, lunches and everything else. So it's a situation where for one person to handle that, we're looking, so it's a, it's almost a situation where if the system is broke, we need to look how to fix it.
The other thing I think should be brought up, how many other GFSs even do this?
Well, one.
I mean, generally this is done by nonprofits at the county. This is something they stepped up to do.
This is something that's done in most counties through a community action agency.
Okay.
And Joga County, I can't tell you when because it far predates my time. It goes back to when the community action boards were first formed. And I think that was the Johnson era or some era or something like that. But our county made a decision back, I think in the 60s that if we're not, we won't be another agency, we're going to do that all through our county.
And the money we're getting is from the state on this issue?
It's federal money and it passes through the Ohio Department of.
That's not a GFS-run program at the state level.
Under the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services.
Right. And it's not something that we could collect on the, on the other side of this? Like, let's say, for example, we, we were to justify that we were going to do X number of dollars. I mean, is that something that you collect on, 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 every year you know that you've got, say, $60,000 available for this? Or is that something, do you collect at the, at the fund or at?
Well, it's a grant agreement. So we actually draw down the funds as we have applications that come through.
Okay.
That are approved. We draw down the funds, we, down the funds, we have to do a grant report every, every month. And then, you know, so we, we start with X amount of money. It's this year, it started more $1,000, it's raised more $50,000.
And we.
And we just, we draw that down as we, as we go through the application process and pay the utility bills.
You know, I was going to mention, and this is a little different situation. But years ago, when we had that Katrina hurricane that came down to Louisiana, there was an individual that fled here to Ohio. And I remember her going into your office and that you folks helped her right then and there. And she got that money instantaneously. I couldn't believe how fast that was. That was, surprised me because, you know, she had fled and, and she had no place to go but up here where her family was. And she kept a, a go-bag ready to roll if that, those hurricanes would come in. But you folks, I mean, you gave her a large amount of money. I remember that.
And actually, you actually have some special allocation for that.
And there's not like there's a hundred Katrina victims running up to Ohio.
Right.
Nevertheless, in your defense, I remember.
And, you know, I, I think there's, you've raised the question to some of this. I will take the question back. Can we go through an RFP process? Is there some way the state on this program would let us have a, a supplier, let's say on call, to make a delivery within a certain time limit? If, if the state can't, wouldn't permit us to do that with their program, what would it take for us to put something in place beyond that? And we, we have done this recently. We are, you know, what we try to look at is say, someone comes in, applies for heat, they've already had to apply for heat. What can we do now, given this winter, to find some resources to help folks who are coming back a second time? And, and we're trying to plug those things in. Drives our caseworkers to go crazy, but they're, they understand why we're doing it because they're trying to meet all those rules. And then they have this kind of temporary thing that we're doing to try to find resources to help someone. But that's, that's what.
If they're using heating oil or they're using propane and it becomes an emergency like, let's say this was over a weekend where maybe someone isn't working. Would seem, although it's got its own problems, that a couple of 100-pound propane tanks or propane tanks can be delivered by someone to the location. And they disconnect the hose and hook it up to the propane tanks to get them through the weekend. Somebody shows up with a 55-gallon drum of heating oil and a pump and puts 55 gallons of oil into their heating, heating tank to get them through that, could be holiday, could be just a weekend or something like that, is a stopgap measure. I'm not sure with the other two utilities being electric and gas, whether or not, you know, when they turn that off or turn that back on. I, I don't know what the timeframe is there. It would seem like it wouldn't be.
Actually, gas and electric under the Public Utilities Commission, they have, they have statutory.
Yeah, they can't turn them off.
They can't.
Right, right. I mean, so those two utilities would be provided, but, but from an emergency standpoint, from the county, having some.
Bulk fuel is an issue.
Yeah, having, having somebody that can take out the, you know, if you had 55 gallons of heating oil, you'd have to have a really big house and a, and an inefficient furnace not to make Saturday and Sunday out of 55 gallons of oil.
We actually also have people who get deliveries of firewood.
I was going to ask you about that.
You run a gas, you run that damage.
Cause I want to, real quick, and I digress. You do supply firewood to people, correct?
This program will pay for firewood if it's a primary heating source, yeah.
And, and we buy that from somewhere.
The state makes those contracts.
Because we have.
We have problems with that.
We have a county, we have, we have an agency.
Bring firewood delivered.
We have an agency that asked me about that because they have wood on occasion. They're on the next street over from you.
Sometimes.
And they said they would like to get rid of it.
Sometimes with the money that comes through the state of Ohio, which is our money actually, right? But comes certain processes, instructions in place that we don't necessarily like, but they like to do it that way.
So how does that work? Like, who do you get the wood from?
They, firewood, they will tell us, here are the vendors that you can, you can contract with. They, they go through a procurement process, if you will.
Through the whole state?
I guess so.
Well, they're also concerned with the beetles and the bugs and all the crap that's in the wood. You can't move.
Ash.
Ash or something because the ash bores and so on, so they don't want you to move that firewood.
Is this somebody like locally that's coming with the wood? I mean, is it somebody that's close or is it?
I, I believe, we had an incident where someone was reliant on firewood. This has been four or five years ago. And they got a delivery of green wood that would not burn.
Yeah, that's the habit.
I, I, the supplier, I think, might have been either on our far eastern end or right over into Trumbull County. But they went to the state and said, they've used their heat resources, you know, for, in the meantime, contacted someone who had firewood. And, and the price that was paid was unbelievable.
For the green wood?
For the green wood. And so we got firewood delivered to our maintenance guy. It was not, you know, worth the cost and so that the person had dry firewood. But that's part of working sometimes in a bureaucratic system.
Real easy, yeah?
Yeah, I bet we pay sales tax on that.
The only other thing I would, I would like to say is that, you know, we take, we take these issues seriously. And our, our staff put a lot into their jobs. The worker in question, who was mentioned at the meeting, Melissa Helm, she's been with us a little over a year. She, she does a very good job. And she's, as I say, she's processed 100% more than that at this point in time. We had no other complaints or issues. You know, she's done a good job.
And the, the people that got turned down in that program, like, why did they get turned down? Like, why would they get turned down?
It'd be over.
Okay.
I think with that kind of workload, Mother Teresa might get.
Oh, no.
Yeah, she might, she might get a little snippy at times or something, you know? I mean, you know, if you're, if you were to follow up.
With, with the issue on the veteran services and all, call, contact the veteran service office. We do work, we do work with them.
Yeah.
And, and actually by law, veterans have certain preferences in terms of services that are provided to them. So that concerns me and is something we'll, we'll look at.
So you were pretty vocal, you know, about, as far as that goes.
Two and a half years ago, we tried a different case structure to handle the volume. And one of the things we tried to do was create a call, a call center instead of the caseworkers. Because what we had was we had caseworkers at the end of the day, they had interviews throughout the day, having 35 calls on their voicemail at 3:30 in the afternoon. So they get balled up, they can't conduct their interviews. We have to do those within a certain timeframe. So we tried something different. We tried a case cooling effect with people dedicated to make, you know, answer the calls. But, you know, our volumes have gone up with the economy and things in the last couple of years. Our call center has not been able to handle 400 to 500 calls a week. And people are frustrated with that. And so we are pitching that, we're going back to a case-by-case basis. And we're going to build into the work schedule time in the morning, time at the end of the day, specifically to handle those phone calls. And, you know, hopefully we'll get that under control. We, we have tried, we're not insensitive, we're just, just sometimes it's, it's a challenge for us being in control.
Did you, I, I just one other question real quick. Did you call her back?
I have not, I have not called her yet.
Were you planning to?
I have.
Thank you. Thank you. You always do.
Well, you know, we, we will put our effort in.
Well, if you do respond.
And I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Yeah, we do that.
All right, the, you don't really need to do a read on that, correct?
Yeah. This reader, I mean, the next one.
Yes, reader.
Okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve with faith of sound of truest deeds and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by 7-Eleven Incorporated. Doing business as 7-Eleven 36218 located at 17644 Chillicothe, Roche Green Falls. See STCK 80036070030.
I'll make that for the show.
Second.
Commissioner Smitty?
Aye.
Commissioner Reardon?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye.
I had that for the, the number eight, but that's okay.
Oh, no, you.
No, no, okay, okay, yeah. The number 10 is, you wanted to read that one there?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of Work to execute the Great Joga County Fair Contract for 2014, running August 28th to September 1st, 2014.
Sonute.
Second.
Commissioner Smitty?
Aye.
Commissioner Reardon?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion stands approved.
I make a motion to go into.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, we have someone here we'd like to ask to introduce and maybe get a presentation from, the firm Clemmons and Nelson. And I don't know, two of you came in, right?
Drew Esposito and Mike Esposito, he's on the phone.
Oh, okay. Well, if you want, want to come up.
Sure thing.
What's that? Can I say drag?
Yeah, bring him in. Yeah. You can wing it.
Is he ordering pizza or lunch or anything?
Yeah, we'll call him, call him.
Hi. That sounds good. You were, your firm was recommended to us by our neighbors across the hall here, engineering firm?
Yeah. I actually am the one who did their organizational analysis and read their plan.
I did, I'm, here you go. And Nelson. One of the Nelson.
Yeah, Nelson.
So just as a background, if you haven't heard of us, we've been doing HR and labor relations for over 35 years. We are probably the largest dedicated HR consultant firm in the Midwest. Represent someone in the range of 300 to 400 couple sector personalities, 38 counties in Ohio, 100 cities, 200, I don't know. Engineers all across the board. Mike here, he's our Director of Labor Relations. He's out of our Akron office. We have four offices, Akron, Lima, Columbus, Tampa.
Not all the way, we have, in case someone wants to come in. Out there somewhere.
Yeah.
And through those four offices, we're able to service from River Lake and from east to west.
We have, we have some Joga County roots here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Me and, me and Mike both are Chagrin Falls resident.
Mike and I.
Yes.
No, don't be, don't be, you know, the high school has pride.
So, and our, and our mother actually grew up right on Bell Road, just past 306, and we live in South Lake. My dad's still a resident there. So we have a long storied history with South Russell. And I, I personally actually represent Russell. I was with Gene and now with Chuck Walder and helped out with various HR staff and the policies and things like that.
We also do, we've been bargaining for the, bargaining with HR work for the TD Board for a number of years, half year. Drew, his primary interface at the Attorney's Office, has a paper championship as well. Do some policy work, some business work out there on personnel issues. So that's kind of our, our background. Did you, I apologize, I take a quick call.
I would overstart our history of over 35 years of doing it. We're both attorneys, our company is a mix of attorneys and non-attorneys. We're probably somewhere in the.
Well, most of them, I think there are more, a lot more attorneys there than non-attorneys. The key thing is, what we bring is a holistic approach. In other words, you're taking, you know, we have the MPAs, we have fiscal officers, and we have the legal side of things. Because when you look at what's going on in an organization, it's never, you can't come at something in the public sector just from one view. The legal answer is not always the right answer for you as an organization. Yeah, you could do things, but if you're in the business of public service and being efficient in delivering a service, does that, does what you're going to do legally impede that? I will tell you, there are times I'll tell you, you could do this ripple effect in terms of productivity, in terms of employee morale, in terms of what you're getting, may not be worth it overall. So, but the question is, it's not you can or can't, it's how, you know, how we go about things to deliver the best service and how we structure organizations. That's kind of, I think that's what Cruz really for the project was up here with him years on this. When he came over was to look at the structure and see what, what was there, how it was set up and how could maybe, you know, be a little more efficient.
And do you establish a set of goals based on what the county commissioner? And do you establish a set of goals based on what the county commissioners would like to see?
Whoever is, is the client, we will sit down, we will talk to you about, you know, what your expectations of the project are. And then we will go through and if your goals are to find out, you know, structurally, do you, you know, do we have too much fragmentation, meaning like, you know, one guy to turn the bolt, one guy to turn the screw, or do we combine jobs? We look at things like that, because that's, that's kind of one of the, one of the neat things about where Ohio has gone in the public sector is with some changes that have been made to one-twenty-four, pulling counties out from under DAS, it's really empowered point authorities who have the power to set compensation. And you're not wedded to a DAS class plan, you're not wedded to it has to look like this. And that really gives you a tremendous amount of flexibility. You know, one of the things we did, I was involved with a few years back in Portage, was the Board of County Commissioners decided to, you know, restructure all employment under them, so that for purposes of efficiency, for purposes of any reductions in force that had to be done, they could make sure that the civil services didn't, didn't, by default, produce inefficiency in the public sector. And one of the things you have is, I tell people all the time, we're set up in these classifications, one of the theories, everyone in the same classification should be able to do what everybody else does. But over, over time, because of different departments, fragmentation, you have situations of people become associated with a certain job, they really can't, they're not like cogs in a machine. And, you know, when you get in a layoff situation, when you reorder, you know, what are you going to do if the person, you know, the seniority in the bumping produces a situation where, you know, somebody can't do somebody else's job.
So give us an example for, as far as, let's say you're coming into, let's, let's say, let's use, like, for example, the engineer did a study. In, in, in that, in that perspective, you reviewed the workload, employee quantity, as far as best utilization of the forces that we had, possibility of job duplication, that we could allow for reduce, reduction of, of positions, or, you know, this is the kind of stuff that, can you elaborate a little bit on that? As far as, you know, what, what are, what are the, at the end of the day, we, we, we get what for our services that we're, you know, where we could potentially pay for it to, to contract with somebody like you?
I think at the end of the day, you tell us what you want for it, and we're solving it, we're figuring out how to get you there. One of the concerns, and I'm not going to speak at a school, but one of the concerns sometimes people have, one, one elected official takes over and others, he looks at the organizational structure and he says, you know, has the prior organization pushed out duties that they're not comfortable having pushed out in certain places? Has the way it has been set up, do we have people who are civil service protected doing duties that are really confidential nature, that are unclassified duties, but, but we haven't filed our appointments, we haven't done things to unclassify the positions, thereby making it much tougher to run the organization?
And as far as a progress report that we're going to be getting with this, I, I think that the, and this is something that we're actually going to be going into executive sessions, you know, at the end of this meeting, to discuss this a little further. But as far as our ability to have communication with you and to continue to, to, to get update as far as the progress on this, I mean, is this something that, you know, we will be able to get weekly, bi-weekly? I mean, what, how, how exactly is this, is, is the, is the communications with us?
Well, actually, I mean, I would envision it as, the reason you have an administrator is so that he can be in a kind of way to all of you without running into public meetings issues and deliberation issues, because, you know, that's one of the things here. The last thing you want us to do is to be conferencing people in on something that turns into a public meeting.
Right, and, and, and we're, we're all for that, but we also are dedicated to getting this right the first time. And if it, if it requires the commissioners to, to, to put more time and effort into this, to be sure that we're, we have an unbiased and fair approach, then I know that we have three commissioners that are more than willing to dedicate whatever time is necessary to communicate, you know, with you also to be able to be, you know, involved in the process. Because you wouldn't be here if we, if, if it wasn't for the fact that the commissioners wanted to take action and to be able to, you know, get this procedure going. So at the end of the day, we, I guess what I'm saying is, is we want to be involved.
Okay.
Am I, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I, what I, my limited experience in the world, I sat in a school board. Sat in a school board environment where we had a state performance audit.
Sure.
Conducted. We, we were fortunate that we had it done preemptively, not, you know, our district wasn't on the ropes. So they did the full audit, as they do when a school district goes belly up. But we weren't compelled to, yeah, we could, we could pick and choose what they said. But they compared us to similar districts, they looked at our operation, they looked at all these components, and then brought their report forward to us. There were some things that were glaring weaknesses, that were like a no-brainer to change and so on, and then, like the heat situation that we were talking about earlier, we have snow here, you guys lived here, you know. So when the guy, so when the guy from Columbus says you have too many snowplow drivers, you, you go, well, we're not going to take that recommendation, thank you very much, you know, and, and that's what I'm wondering, is there some?
Well, let me, let me.
Is that what you do?
To that, one of the, I've seen performance audits done all over the place. The performance audit done by the State Auditorial Office does a lot of what they call apples-to-apples comparisons type of sort of thing. Looks at, okay, this X county here has this many people in X county here.
Right, exactly.
But where they, where they, where sometimes they lose connection is the, the local nuances.
Exactly.
What we will, because I, I went through one in, in a township out east where they were comparing them to a township in southern Ohio. And they had, the southern Ohio townships, some of the large ones at fifty, sixty thousand, they have like massive funding mechanisms for levies that are, were completely different than a place that had no levies. So you're making comments saying, well, why aren't you doing this and that? Well, the structure, completely different, the funding, the governments, all of it was different, but that got lost in it. What we will look at is we will look at your operation, processes, workflow, not necessarily say Joga County should look like X county over here, it's like, these are the people you have, these are the duties you do, this is the amount you spend, let's look at how these duties are set up, does it make sense? You know, from a process standpoint, where the duties are allocated in terms of have, have duties that should be with unclassified employees been pushed out elsewhere, is there, you know, do we have the proper checks and balances in place with regard to how the positions are structured, the classes are structured, things of that nature? We'll just, it's not going to be about comparing you guys necessarily to say you should do it this way, it's about, does your operation from a business perspective make sense?
Tailored to our demographic.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, what we have here is, let's use the word unique, but there may be another example, but we'll use the word unique, and the plan would be tailored to.
To what you guys.
To our.
What I will assure you is, it's not going to be something where, where we say that, you know, down in southern Ohio and some other county with the population, they set it up in a way that's this way, so you should do it that way. Because that's, frankly, that's, that doesn't go to the level of helping you guys. I mean, anyone can do that, you call somebody up and you say, okay, what does the executive director over here make in this, you know, place? What do they do over here? Well, all you have is, all you have is comparison of two rates with no relationship to what the power level is, what the authority is, what the actual duties of the position is. It's like when you, even when you do labor relations and do comparables, and you say, okay, hey, you know, maintenance worker one over here makes X, maintenance worker one over here makes Y, well, what if, what if the X guy has a CDL, is this, has these licenses, and the Y guy is basically just a laborer off the street? Not a legitimate comparison. What we need to look at is the duties and the operation, and what you guys want to do.
It's a concern of mine that, you know, when you have an operation where there's X amount of people, and if there are several people that are somehow in collusion with the person who is running something, and they, they have stated, this is fine, we can do this, how do you, I mean, how do you put the checks and balances in there to maintain that separation where, you know, you won't have that, oh, well, we, we can do this, it's perfectly okay? I mean, you know, even when we look at what the auditor of state says.
Right, about policies and all that.
There's no real policy there in place unless you say, okay, we're not, you know, we're not going to do this. And if somebody is bound and determined to use this for their own gain.
Ultimately, the, the ultimate failing with any system is that it relies on, you know, lots of people. So it's about the quality of the people we hire. I mean, I always, I always joke, because I see what happened in County County, they, they did the referendum, you know, well, many people don't know that some counties have been a charter place with a, with a county executive and a county council for, they were, one of eighty-eight for decades.
Yeah.
And guess what, they had two executives who ended up getting indicted. The system doesn't matter, it's the people.
But if someone is bound and determined to do that, that was my point, if they're, if they're determined to do that, you know, we catch, we catch things early on, but even so, if they're determined, you know, you can't sit there and micromanage every breath they take all day long. That's, I guess, my question, how does one?
All you can hope to do.
Performance audit, obviously, is good, but.
All you can hope to do is create systems in place that make it more likely that it will be caught, and also ensure that your reporting structures and processes that create multiple checks and balances within. Because it's, you know, the person who is, who has the power and they, you know, like you said, say they, they get some little cadre of their own confidence to say, we're going to do this, you know.
And they all do it.
And they all get together, I mean, I mean, look at what happened years ago with the, remember the clerk in Chester Township? He was basically directly.
Well, he wrote his own.
Well, no, but he had created a system internally where everything came to him.
Well, he made his own reports.
Oh, yeah.
And what we do as a board, every time we go in and we're, we're some kind of fiduciary, I mean, just even recently, we asked for the real statements from the bank. That's the only way, with, with the accompanying envelopes that they mail, were mailed in. I mean, unless you see that, that's what they didn't see in Chester, they never saw it.
Oh, yeah, they saw copies and they said.
No, they saw, they saw reports that were made by that clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was decades ago, we don't need to rehash it, but it's.
Well, that's less than ten years ago.
No, no, he's out, no.
He's not, he's.
He's in a, in a, you know, halfway house or something like that, but he's out in prison.
Skip, did you have something?
I do. Let me base this question on the fact that I've done what you guys do for decades, for a very large company, multi-billion dollar companies, I've created processes for companies with the practices, procedures inside of the company to ensure that they operate effectively, efficiently, and they have the proper safeguards to ensure things happen, or don't happen, that things are caught, like what happened with the Transit Department? There were not practices and policies in place to properly safeguard, if you're handling cash, there's steps you take in order to ensure that that cash is handled properly, because there's so much risk associated with that. And it's easily caught, it's easily visible. And so there's the people's side of things, and you said this correctly, you gotta hire good people. But sometimes people, good people go bad, and I can give you a thousand examples, my company, or my wife is an HR director for a very large company, she deals with this all the time, people who get into bad situations are good people. Somehow money makes people get a little crazy. And so I didn't, what I heard you say was that you focus on the HR side, salaries, making sure you get the right salaries, yada, yada, yada. But if there's going to be an audit in place and/or if we're going to, we're going to safeguard, create a mechanism to put safeguards into it, you need to have expertise in the processes, unique to the, to the departments that you're working with. And so Department of Transit is different from Department of Planning, and so on and so forth. And so how do you approach, what is your approach for ensuring that as you're going through this assessment that you're going through, that you're establishing the correct policies, procedures, and standards to create a level of safeguards? You can let it be perfect, but you can always create a level of safeguards to help to ensure that the, that the, that the, the proper mechanisms are in place. And do you have that or not?
I guess, it's somewhat a nebulous question, how you go through the approach. We come at things from a public sector HR standpoint, and it's really unique to public. It's easy for me, before you can get to the structure that you want to be looking, in the civil services, and this is what gets, is very frustrating, is you come in into a civil service system with classified, unclassified employees, unclassified employees have been doing certain things, and in order to get to the process of changing it, you have to go through the, you know, the movement of job duties, and then there are appeal rights, and go through the process of a recommendation for, you know, economy, efficiency, when you're restructuring, yeah, when you're restructuring things, you're obviously not going to be doing lack of funds. But it's not as simple as snapping my fingers and saying, it's not a good idea to have this here and this here and moving it over here, because once we, once we move things over here, then we have to go with, what do I do with the employee who used to be doing this?
Yeah, this sounds a question, if you don't mind, let me try it again.
If I could, hang on one second, Skip, on this here, no disrespect, but on this particular issue, this is something that the commissioners are actually in, in the process of negotiating with, you know, to, to make a decision on this, that I appreciate the public input, but at this point in time, I think that this is something that, you know, I, I'm not saying that, and, and your point is taken, and I appreciate it, but I think that at this point in time, we've got a lot of questions and determinations that we need to make as, as a board, that, that as far as public input on this, this is something that the commissioners are, are moving forward to pursue more, more so than, you know, to actually have the, you know, public's input on this because of the fact that just it's going to deal with sensitive issues, it's sensitive nature.
Right.
And that I just feel more comfortable to, at this point in time, you know, stop any, any of the public questions on this and just let us move forward on this to make a decision as a board.
One of, you know, one of the things I would say is, is some of the thoughts and the things that we're going to be sharing are appropriate for executive sessions, particularly on personnel matters.
Yeah.
So, but until we, until you find out what's there.
You don't know.
You, you don't know how to, you know, they can tell us, where do you want to be?
Exactly.
We'll have to look at where we're at.
Skip.
Just a final comment, if you don't mind, there's an HR part of this, and then there's a business part of this, a process part of this. I don't know what these guys are here for, I'm, it wasn't in the agenda, and so I wasn't sure exactly what.
It was a situation where, where, we're, we're working on, on a, it was, it was a last minute issue that we, we, we had tried to make a, make this so that we would have had them on time, and it was a situation that their schedule was available to talk to us, and it was just something that we feel we need to take some action ASAP to clarify and work on some of the, the issues of checks and balances within our county to make sure that we are doing everything above board. It's not a matter of we're trying to pull the rug under, from under anybody, or pull the wool over anybody's eyes, it's something that we had to, we're, we're acting fast to get accountability and a, and a position of correctness if, if need be within the county. At this point in time, we, we, we have no issues maintaining transparent with, with the fact of bringing them here to be able to publicly speak to us, but getting back to what I was saying before is, I agree wholeheartedly with you, is that I think that once, i- i- if, if we were to decide on this, that I think that a lot of the conversations due to the fact that it's going to be sensitive of nature needs to be handled, I believe.
Thanks.
An executive session, we'll contact our legal advice on that, just to ensure that we're above boards on, on handling that.
We don't even have a report back on what.
What's what?
What went wrong, or what, you know, we know that there's, there's some issues and questions that are in everybody's mind, but it's still an ongoing investigation, and so to, to talk about any specific thing is.
Well, if I can, let me ask you this.
Go ahead.
If I, if I can just kind of further clarify, you know, obviously the board expressed their concerns about this. And I was asked to make contact with Clemmons and Nelson as a start, simply because they had done good work reviewing the county engineer's operation. I've also reached out to ODOT Department of Transit to see if they. I've also reached out to ODOT Department of Transit to see if they have any resources, because obviously, ODOT Department of Transit provides a lot of the funding for this agency, and we want them comfortably, comfortable to that things are being done well. And they've given me a couple names as well. So, I, I talked these commissioners individually, just said, "These folks could be available to come on these days just to introduce themselves as a possible resource." And then from there, we have to look at maybe a couple other resources.
To make a decision.
And I, and forgive me for this, I applaud what you're doing. You're doing the right thing. My, my challenge is I have a unique set of skills, this is in my...
Well, I understand that, Skip.
It's fine.
That's what I'm telling them.
You've got to get...
We all have a unique set of skills.
I can't hold these guys up anymore.
I can add something to maybe, I think what Skip was bringing up, as far as every single public sector elected official in the department is going to have unique skills. You're talking about what experience with the transit authority, and they've got you... We did a similar thing in Knox County just a couple months ago, where we did an entire, except there's an employee relations audit. They were having significant issues with their executive director and a lot of their employees. Lots of back and forth and lots of issues. It ended up moving, it was a separate transit board. We ended up moving the entire operation under the board commissioners, similar to what you have. It resulted in that executive director for that transit authority actually leaving, unfortunately leaving the agency as a result of a report, because we found egregious errors in policy and procedure and reporting, timekeeping, job, things of that nature. We also assisted the Union County Transit Authority, which is under the Senior Services. This is what you're going to have different in the public sector. You're going to have individual boards of transit. You're going to have transit directly to the commissioners. You're going to have transit under the Senior Services. You're going to have transit under JFS sometimes that help with senior service. So, each one's going to be unique, and it's completely a different animal than the private sector HR world.
It's not, and I'll say this, when you get into how you react, there are many situations where we partnered with, you know, technical, technically people from, from ODOT, from transit to talk about their internal processes, and they're, they're looking at the technical side of that, and we're looking at the civil service side.
Sure, right.
Where you're looking at, "Okay, you need people to do this. You've got the expertise there, deliver it here, tell us what it needs to be. We'll take it, we'll take it and run with it in the civil service for the job abolishment, the state, the state appeal and anything else." And it's, I will tell you, anyone who tells you they don't want to do every single thing in the world...
It's impossible.
We're really good at public sector labor relations and civil service and structural management within that framework. Now, if, if some accountant's going to come in and tell me, "Well, this is the accounting procedures." Okay, give them to me, we'll write them in the classbook, or tell me how, how we need to do this, and we'll put it in there, and then leave it to us to get the organizational process done, so that the public sector process of moving to where you want to be, that's what we're going to be really good at.
And I got to agree with you. I spent twenty years of my life as a consultant with major corporations throughout the United States. And I wouldn't even begin to say that I would understand what you'd have to do for public service, because I wouldn't have a clue. I worked for companies that could fire people at will, but we can't do that.
These state auditors, I've spoken to them last three years. When I walk in, their first question is, "How many people got elected here and then run government like a business?"
It can't...
Everybody raises their hand.
Right, and, and, and I know that. I mean, I remember sitting there with JI case and, and talking to them, and Firestone, and many, many large companies. It's a whole different ballgame.
Commissioner? In this case, right here, that we're talking about, we don't even know, you know, we...
What's what?
We, we, we can, all of us can just, you know, close our eyes and conjure up all these disasters and all these scenarios that are out of control. And in, in fact, there may be a situation of that, and there may be, that may be grossly overstated, and there was just a, a breakdown in, in, in a few individuals or something that did something. And so, what, what, what I'm interested in hearing from you folks is that, based on what I was told by the engineer, you were able to, to go in and say, I don't want to use, streamline might not be the word I'm looking for, but you were able to lay out a procedure, a personnel, and so on, and, and just review what had been done, because it was a new engineer coming into a, to, into, he got elected and came into an existing situation. That's what I think, I think, that's what we're kind of looking for. I don't want to speak for the other two without...
I know what's wrong.
Speaking of that, so when I first met with Joe and Frank Antonucci, you know, they were moving towards a kind of a deputy engineer system, where not, they had the construction, they had planning, they had development, and they were figuring out, there were gaps, you know? We had this planning department, wasn't talking with the construction department, and there was this miscommunication, and then there were special projects. So, we were trying to figure out how to streamline the top-down, and everything flows through that. So, it came through, honestly, interviewing. I've interviewed every single employee, I think I was over in the engineer's building until seven, seven o'clock on a couple nights, because we added some interviews. And they just said, "Shut the door when you leave." I'll interview every employee, listen to them, blow in the face, and that's what helps, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
What do you, what do you see what's wrong? What do you see going on?
Because rank and file will tell you.
Yeah, and through that process, we discovered, you know, not any huge issues, but just better ways to run things. We also found, hey, there is this component where we provided, where we paid a contractor to do various services that an employee used to do. And that goes, well, that employee, when I get his job description and go through his position analysis, I get his dues, and I say, "Well..."
Being underutilized.
Yeah, "Why isn't he using it anymore?" So, let's get, let's, let's get it back to him and save some money there. And then, then it goes into, like Mike was saying, "We're looking at your organization." If I look at Ottawa County Engineer, where they have a bargaining unit, it's going to be completely different.
Definitely.
You know, and you guys, they have a foreman level, and in my analysis, I go, "This is down the road. You may want to go away from the foreman." That's obviously a, you know, an old vestige of the bargaining unit, where you separate management from personnel. That's, you're probably going to be looking at a maintenance worker four-five. So, we get it specific to that agency. And for hiccups and things that we need to rely on, that's where our thirty-five years of, of experience and pulling our clients coming in, I can reach out to the Morrow County Transit Authority, you know, and reach out and say, "Have you run into this issue? Let's, let's talk it out." You know, you guys are public sector. I can't imagine how many times you've called a neighboring county commissioner, or a public sector, and say, "Has this happened? Let me steal that policy, let me steal this, and that." We do that, we have a bigger net, we just have a bigger net.
You have a bigger net.
We just have a bigger net.
What do...
And I think that's good.
And we have the experience, it's a big thing.
What do you need from us so that you can prepare a proposal and a quote? Now, obviously, we'll probably be going to at least another, you know, a competitive bid or something. But, but I guess I'm trying to say, "We have a problem, fix it." You know, "Okay, well, you're going to need a little more than that."
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I don't know, and maybe you deal directly with David on that, or, or whatever. But what do you need from the county so that you can...
We'll interact with Dave to get the stuff, but what we will need is your existing table of organization over there, an idea of what the personnel structure is. I want to take a look at the existing job descriptions, how your duties are parsed out in there. And, and then we're also going to need, you know, get Dave through you guys, give him some input as to where you see the direction going.
Yeah, the past and the future, I mean, we, we need to know that.
And, and so you're going to talk to the employees too, because you can walk transparently...
That'll be part of the proposal.
Yeah, that's good. That, because they may say things to you that they never say to us.
Can we get a proposal from you, cost of services?
That's what we're working on right now.
Yeah, that's good.
We're trying to find out what they need from us, so that they can give us back...
We will give you a, you know, a, a proposal that describes the steps that we would take in, in going through the process, and we have a...
You'll, you'll, you'll share that with us?
Yeah, sure.
I think I can send it today if you can.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Do we need to take an action to empower you people to do this?
No, I mean, this is no obligation. Put it this way, this is the cost of doing business.
That's right.
You're not a politician.
Right, no, that's not, I'm, I'm...
It's not like, it's not like the engineering contract sometimes where they...
We need architect, we need architect to design this first, and then we can ask you.
No, it's...
Still a lot of confidence, you need to reschedule, you need to restructure your own place where you charge for everything.
No, no, you know, you know, we've been a business thirty-five years, and it's really, it's, it's long-term relationships, so...
Yeah, no, I, I...
Anything we can do to improve, what we've seen.
I think we've all agreed, right? That we need to do something, we just don't know exactly what it is we need, and then the costs involved or associated with that.
And, and, you know, when you talk to all the principals involved, you know, that you can get a better picture.
So, if you, I, I, you know, I want to thank you guys for your time. I know you've been here forever, you probably, if you charge by the hour, I don't know.
Well, this is, this first one is a grind. After that, once we're hired, then...
You wouldn't be surprised.
No, I, I, I appreciate you coming, and I guess you've talked, David is a point person, and, and, and...
I have heard you at the county. I especially remember that, you're going to run it like a business.
Yeah, that's, I tell you, I ask people that all time, everybody raises their hand, and then, and then I say, "How's that working out for you?"
How's that working for you?
Usually, they raise their hand, or they shake their head.
How's that working for you?
And a lot of times, it's not that you can't do things, it's hard to do, it's really about how you do it, you know? And that's, that's frustrating.
There's just ten more steps. Private sector, you got one step, there you go.
Yeah, you own the business, you know, hey, you're out of here.
I'd rather have a path from the minefield than just go walk it out there myself.
Well, then, that's just it. Then I've had, I've had some clients who prefer to wander in the minefield, they step in the mine, and they say, "Help me put it back together." He's just waiting to put it back together, it's not to walk out there.
But like you say, give them an element, how we can skew the best plans.
That's a trump card there.
The best, they're determined, and, and we've seen that. You see it in...
Northeast Ohio is not the...
Especially in bad economic times.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like the gentleman reference, sometimes something, you know, you have a vice that takes over. You see that.
Yeah, they have a gambling, a spending vice, I mean, you know, addictions that take over.
Family emergencies.
Yeah, that too.
Family emergencies, you don't know where you're going to get the money to pay for grandma's medication, or whatever, and... And they're only borrowing, you know?
Yeah.
Well, they always plan to put it back.
Yeah, that's right, so it's just a loan.
That's what one parish priest told me, he said, "With his big ol' sister, they always play..."
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll shoot you in the name.
Okay? Thank you so much.
Pleased to meet you.
My pleasure.
Pleased to meet you.
Thank you.
This is the commissioner's meeting, it was nice seeing you again.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Thanks for coming in. I think I was up here at one point.
You've been here before.
Commissioner Albert.
Oh, he's here.
He was sitting there.
He was sitting there for a few minutes.
Yeah, I remember that.
I believe there was, I believe there was...
The Trager key?
I believe there was a comment about sterilization.
Oh, yeah.
Many times.
We just want to make it clear.
That's right.
Back in the day.
So, we are going to recess for an executive, or a meeting...
Yeah, conference with the state auditors, which is... One of the things under law you're allowed to do without being public.
Okay, let's go.
Okay.
I need a motion to recess.
Second.
Yes, question, will there be any action?
No, no, no.
This, this is, this, they, they recessed from their meeting, so this...
The auditors are here, and we're wasting a lot of their time to go in, and it's their meeting.
And then they'll reconvene to go back into executive session through, to finish their meeting.
Okay.
We're rolling. Okay.
We can reconvene at, let's see...
Twelve twenty-three, twenty-two?
I get twelve twenty-three.
No action?
Are you going to go into executive session?
Yes.
Fisher's offices are pushing the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the compensation of the public employee.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker?
Aye.
Ready?
Sorry about that.
Okay, we're back on.
Back on.
Look the record show at one fifty-five that we returned from executive session, no action.
And, and the commissioner's committee had to leave before the end of the meeting.